Alright, good morning everyone and thank you all very much for coming out on a Saturday morning for our Belmar Town Hall. You know, we hold our council meet at 6 o'clock the first and third Tuesday of the month, so I thought we'd try something like this to reach out to folks, communicate directly with everybody in town in an hour that may be a little easier for folks. The reason why we're here in the Belmar Elementary Auditorium at the gym is we have basketball, recreation basketball today, and we didn't want to interrupt those children who are playing basketball. And the school was nice enough to accommodate us, so I want to thank Belmar Elementary School for that. First and foremost, it's a good partnership we have with them between us as a town and them as a school. So I want to first introduce some of the folks you see up here. First and foremost are the members of the council, and it's kind of interesting that every member of the council has a connection to Belmar Elementary School where we're at today. I myself, I actually have two children that go to Belmar right now. Council President Brian McGovern, stand up. Brian, what, kindergarten?
Went to kindergarten.
Brian went to kindergarten. Councilwoman Jennifer Nicolay, who is tied up right now, but I think she'll be here in a little while. She actually has two children that go here. Councilman Tom Brighter is actually a teacher here at Belmar Elementary School. And our newest addition to the Belmar Council, Mark Walziffer, who served on the board of education for 17 years. He started with the school, so that's interesting. I also want to introduce you, you know, we're really remarkable team that you have here that works every day on your behalf in a variety of capacities. So I want to introduce them as they just stand up, going from left all the way to your left to your right. So first, our Borough Attorney Frank Madden, please stand up. Code Enforcement Frank Sinelli. Nope, he's good if you're mad at your neighbor and the grass is too long. Next is Patty White, our Deputy Court Administrator. Grandma in front of Patty, it's not for a good reason. Next is our outstanding Director Superintendent, does a remarkable job with the Department of Public Works, Mike Campbell. Next is our relatively new Chief of Police here in Belmar, who really has done a remarkable job. I'm going to get more into that later when we talk about now introducing Lake Como. But our Police Chief Andrew Heisman. You know, we have a lot of projects going on in town, and I'm going to get into that later as well. But also with us is our Borough Engineer Lisa DeFransen. Now, the person who runs, manages the entire town, does a remarkable job. You know, I like to take the credit, even though really it's all her, and that's Colleen Conley. Next to her is our Chief Financial Officer. She's been with the town for many, many years. Started off as a Class 1 Police Officer when she was five. And I will also tell you, because I know there's, I've got some questions on this, and I'm curious to some folks here, she's the tax collector in town. So one of the things she has done is she's brought a list of every property in town, so if people want to take a look at, after the meeting, want to take a look at their property, what the assessment is, and what the taxes are going to be, she's there for that. She's also going to help folks who are going to, you know, apply for the senior free. We're going to talk about in a little while as well, and that's Rob O'Kearney. Next is a woman who is our Town Clerk, but also if you ever go before the Planting Board, Zoning Board, if you ever need a permit in town, she handles all that. She is a person that we throw more responsibility on top of every chance we get because she does a remarkable job. That's April Soria. After her, you may have heard that Belmar is a tourist town, and we have an outstanding tourism director, and that's Mary Brown. Next, it says Borough Treasurer, but she does so many other functions in town. If you've ever gone to any of the senior lunches, you'll see her there, helping out and coordinating a lot of it. And that's one of the things we're going to talk about is how our senior lunches have really grown over the last few years. And that's a real testament to Kelly Williams. Next, and I'm glad you got dressed up for today, is Recreation Director. He does a great job with children's programs, but also, you know, as we do more bus trips now than ever before, and he's really taken the Recreation Department in Belmar to a whole new level, and that's Ray Floyd. And last is our library. So everyone loves a library, right? Right? Good Lord. We have a remarkable library in town. Welcome here to Rose, our library. Also on the way in, you should have gotten packets of information. One is titled "The Belmar Department of Public Works, What They Do", "Attention Residents", another one. The Senior Tax Free, which I'll get into later. And then also our Police Department frequently asked questions. So please, if you have that, take a look at that, read that later on. Also, one of the new apps we're going to be launching, we're trying to be as technologically savvy as possible, is called "Reported", where you're able to see something in town, send me a report on it anonymously. I get it on my phone, I forward it on to Colleen Conley, the Business Administrator. She disperses it to either the Police, DPDW, Code Enforcement, whoever it is, and it gets handled. This came to us as an idea from the Mayor in Ocean Township, Chris Siciliano, great guy. Much larger town, he says it's worked really, really well there. So we wanted to bring the same type of technology here for you all as well. So it's called "Reported", it looks like this, and it's something you just download onto your smartphone. So I want to get into... You know, in the letter I sent out, I talked about, sorry. I talked about how we were going to go through the financial situation of our town, how we're going to talk about our Police Department, DPDW, some of the projects we're doing in town, and then take questions. And I asked people if they want to email me questions, I would address them before we started taking questions from the phone. I can tell you I received over a third emailed questions, and then other questions that people called about. A lot of them had to do with the most recent tax assessment. And I can tell you that when I talked to Colleen Conley about doing the Town Hall today, I picked this date back in the middle of December, not knowing that the Monday beforehand, everyone was going to be getting these notices of how much their property value has gone up, and therefore how much they're at risk for their taxes going up as well. So it's just happenstance, but it actually works out pretty well, because I think we're going to have some very useful information for folks about the tax assessment. So I want to start off with the projects that we have in town. And some of this is going to cover some of the questions. So I did get some questions about the pavilions up on the Vitrine. The Taylor Pavilion, you know, we took people through it back in October to give them an idea of what it's going to look like. They're probably going to get fully completed with that, you know, somewhere in the middle of April. 10th Avenue Pavilion as well. So they'll both be online for sure for this summer. There is also a large project, everyone has noticed, I'm sure, at the Marina. That project is being completely funded by Chefs International, all privately funded. They're looking also to be completed by Memorial Day of this year as well. Once that's done, we're going to be able to address the parking situation at the Marina, which has really been very challenging for all of 2016. Because the other project that was going on at the same time was a project to dredge the channel, the state channel through the Shark River. And if you go to the parking lot in the south side of the Marina, you'll see the equipment. That's still there, that should be leaving in the next few weeks, and we'll get all that parking back as well. So parking was challenging, to say the least, in 2016, but we think we're going to make some different improvements at the Marina in 2017. Couple of things that are worth noting. As I mentioned before, Ray Floyd has done a remarkable job with recreation, and along with Kelly Williams for the senior lunches. You know, our bus trips, we're now running seven bus trips, the Broadway, Mets games, Yankee games, and the Philadelphia Flower Show. You know, we used to have about 50 people come to our senior lunches. Now we're up to about 150 folks that come. And all that food is donated from businesses in Belmar, and businesses near Belmar. So the last one was Bar Anticipation, RA in Lake Como, actually donated all the food for a senior lunch. Which, when you start talking 150 people, it's not a small donation, it starts to get pretty substantial. So we have some really great corporate sponsors. Another thing we've done over the last few years, and it was really Councilwoman Nicolay's initiative, was creating a summer camp in Belmar. So we heard from a lot of parents that they would take their kids and bring them to camps outside of Belmar, and then all of a sudden, they would bus them to Belmar for things like the Sandcastle Contest, or to go to the beach. So we thought, you know, why not, Councilwoman Nicolay thought, why not just have a camp right here for our children? It was very successful in 2015, and we grew on it in 2016. And in 2017, we're going to increase the participation as well. And because we keep it all in-house, we keep it very, very affordable for middle-class families to have their children participate in a program that really runs all day, which would be very difficult to find anywhere else, particularly at an affordable price. Another thing that, and this is, you mentioned it here. Another thing that Councilwoman Nicolay was implementing and bringing back over the last few years is the Belmar Youth Club. This is something that gives children opportunity to do things, particularly on Saturday nights. Gives parents a little reprieve for a bit of time as well. During the winter months in particular, where we open up the gym and the gym, and they play a lot of sports and games, and they also go on trips, and that's the Belmar Youth Club. Now, it is up to about 75 families participating. Next, I want to get on to our Police Department, which truly does a remarkable job in our town. As I mentioned before, Andrew Heisman is relatively new to the position of Chief. Somebody not new to being a police officer in Belmar. He took over for Tom Palmetano, I'm sure a lot of folks remember Tom. And in 2016, we started policing Lake Como. That came about because Lake Como was looking at a tremendous increase in their cost for having a police department. They were going to go to about $2.4 million a year for their police department. Now, Belmar is one square mile. Lake Como is one quarter of one square mile. But for policing services, you have to provide 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. They don't take a minute off, they're not allowed to. So they were looking at exorbitant costs. So they came to us, and they asked us for a proposal, and they were proposing. And what we negotiated was, they will pay 25% of whatever our police budget is, and then on a side, à la carte, they pay for any special police officers during the summer months. Fortunately for us, during the summer months, we take the money that we generate up at the beachfront, and we're able to offset the costs of our police officers, the special ones, too. Lake Como does not have a beachfront. So when Lake Como's special police officer are out there, it gets paid directly by the taxpayers of Lake Como. I didn't want to have that burden on our taxpayers, so we negotiated where that cost is separate from what they pay us. Some of the concerns we heard last year from residents in Belmar was a lapse of time in police, EMTs or Fire Department personnel coming if there's a 911 call. What we've seen is absolutely no drop in service in Belmar. The Belmar Police Department, First Aid, and Fire Department respond just as quickly and just as well today as they did before we started providing police services to Lake Como. And in talking with Mayor Wilton in Lake Como, Brian Wilton, and also members of their council, residents in their town, and business owners, they are extremely happy with the level of policing services they receive now versus what they had in the past. Not that they had a bad police department, but their resources were so limited because their tax base was so small, they couldn't afford the same type of professional-like police department that we had in Belmar. Now, when you look at the dollars and cents of it, and I'm going to get into that a little later as well. We made, I can't use the word profit, because Department of Community Affairs gets upset if they save a profit, but we generate significantly more money than it costs us to provide those services. So our Police Department is really doing a remarkable job. Our public works over the last few years has just been hammered. I mean, really killing it out there, particularly with water supply. One of the biggest complaints I received when I became Mayor was brown water. People would wash their whites, and it would come out brown. They would call the town, and we would quickly have to tell them, "Don't dry your clothes." Because if you dry your clothes, you put a, I don't know, your white denim, right, that came out brown. If you dry that, the rust will stay in there, and you can't wash it out. We're going to send Franny Hines down, or somebody, with this special type of chemical. I don't know what it was. That, you wash it with that chemical, and it'll get all the rust back. At the same time, you know, I have folks who live on Pine Tree Way, who are sending pictures of their children, young children, taking a bath in brown water, in rusty water. Now, we tested the water, and all the tests came back fine. It came back that you could drink it, cook with it, you could use it, there was no issue with the water whatsoever. But it was stained in people's toilets, it was stained in people's tubs, and clearly, no one wanted this. So a lot of people went out and they got filters to filter the water. The filters only lasted a couple of months, and it got very expensive because of how much rust there were in the pipes. The pipes were so old, they were never replaced, and nothing just, as we know in life, nothing just fixes itself. So over the last few years, we've done about $7 million in water improvements. The largest one occurring on 13th Avenue. 13th Avenue is actually one of the longest streets in Belmar. They had a tremendous problem with their water quality. But also in the Rhode Island Point section, which is generally considered anything in Belmar from Route 71 west, from 16th Avenue north, and from Route 35, I guess you would say southeast. That's the Rhode Island Point section. So just a good idea, 13th Avenue is about $2 million, Rhode Island Point was about $1,006,000. I mean, the other places, we went after, you know, various places in the southern end. Our storage tank needed to be rehabbed, well water, or water well number 10 had to be rehabbed. Main Street had water rehabilitation as well. And all this has really paid off. And it's paid off from the fact that for the past six months, in the first time since anyone at DPDW can remember, we have had no complaints of anyone having any rust or water, or rust or any ground discoloration in their water. And the other folks who would have this problem too, were people who filled up their pool. So imagine you fill up your pool, you get ready to go, and all of a sudden, you look at it, and it looks like it's a swamp. So we've been able to address that. We did that through $7 million worth of construction since 2011. They've also done a tremendous amount of roadway improvements. So we've repaved River Ave and the Borough Parking Lot, repaved 6th Ave, 7th Ave, 8th Ave, and 10th Ave, west of Main Street, repaved all of A Street, north of Silver Lake, and repaid the new roadway on North Boulevard after Sandy. In addition, when you look at all the roadwork they've done, remember, we're one square mile, they've done about 2.8 miles, 2.68 miles worth of paving over the last six years, which is really remarkable for a small town like us. Some of the other big accomplishments from DPDW over the last couple of years was they installed a new restroom at Therry Park, which desperately needed. Installed a paved roadway at Marina. They're the ones building the decks and the ramps around the pavilions up on the Vitrine. And they installed 1.3 miles of curbing up on Ocean Avenue. So this past year, the county, Ocean Avenue is a county road. The county went ahead and paved all of Ocean Avenue from Spring Lake all the way up through Bradley Beach. Obviously, we benefited from that. But before they did it, we had to put curbing in that was never there before. Our Department of Public Works was able to do that, and do it quickly, in anticipation of the roadway getting done as well. Another nice, another nice item I like to point out, because I think it's indicative of how much our Department of Public Works cares about the town, is our street sweeper. I mean, we have an outstanding street sweeper. I don't know if you've ever seen this guy operate, but he'll go forward, backwards. If there's a car in the way, he goes up to the car, pulls back, goes around, pulls up, tries to get as much as possible in debris out of the streets. And I can tell you that in 2016, it's a remarkable number. 2016, that sweeper logged over 4,400 miles, just sweeping Belmar. And, you know, what times do you start up in the morning in the summer? I mean, 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. He starts, "Please not matter, he's got no kids." "Try that." "Oh, my wife, that." But I think it's a test of how much they truly are dedicated to this town, and care about how it works. I have some other code enforcement or construction zoning stuff that, well, it's not as interesting. It is indicative of where we're heading as a town. So for our small town, in 2016, we issued 648 construction permits. Now, our peak was right after Sandy, we did over 1,000 in 2013. That's a lot of permits. But that was because we're dealing with the worst natural disaster in the history of our town or our state. This is more of just folks who are investing their own money in our town, in their own properties, which tells you that we're definitely headed in the right direction. So that's DPDW, some of the stuff our police are doing. Now I want to talk to you about what Robin Kirk and Colleen really focus on, and that's the financial strength and health of the town. So I can tell you, you may have heard me say this before, Belmar has had no tax increase in the past six years. We were already putting together the budget for 2017, and I can tell you that Belmar will have no tax increase for the seventh year in a row. We are the only town in all of Lamont County that can say that. It's unprecedented in the town's history. And just for the heck of it, I searched out other towns in the state that can say the same thing, and I did find one. I thought we'd be the only ones, but I did find one. The one town I found was Tita Borough in Bergen County. Tita Borough has 67 residents, and it has an airport. So that's the only town that can compete with us when it comes to taxes. A town with 67 people and an airport. But in New Jersey, that class applies as a town. So we're very happy with the direction that we're heading in regarding our taxes overall. Again, I'm going to get more into the tax assessments, because if your taxes are going up, you're not happy with what I'm saying. The reason why we've been able to pull taxes flat, and just a good idea, they're actually lower. So the amount of money collected in taxes for municipal services in 2017 is lower than it was in 2010. That's primarily due because we generate more revenue outside of property taxes now than ever before. And when I say revenue, I mean reoccurring revenue. So money that, it's not just coming in '15 or '16, it's also going to come in '17, '18, on into the future. We collect about $7.2 million in property tax revenue from residential commercial property owners. This year, we're going to generate $1.5 million more in recover, renewable revenue on an annual basis than we did in 2010. If we didn't have that, your taxes instead of being $7.2 million would be $8.7 million. It would be 20% higher today if we did not have this reoccurring revenue on an annual basis. Now, what is that revenue? As I mentioned before, we now provide decent services for Lake Como. In 2017, we're going to build that for somewhere around $1.2 million for that. I mentioned before the Marina Building, that's being constructed, fully funded by Chefs International, nothing to do with the taxpayers of their money. When that comes online, his annual revenue is going to be $240,000 a year. Remember, that's not just one year. He's into a lease for 50 years. Most of us, except for Brian McGovern, are not going to be here to see the end of that lease. But what's nice is, every year, that's going to increase at 2% and 3% for future. So every year will be another record year of how much revenue the town generates outside of property taxes, which keeps the burden from growing for taxpayers like you all, and the commercial taxpayers as well, well on into the future. And why reoccurring revenue is so important is someone and I, I'll compare it to what Lamont County did. So Lamont County Government sold nursing homes for $32.4 million. It's a lot of money. They have a big budget, obviously much larger costs. They took all that money and used it in one year. In one year, it's all gone. For us, again, we have $1.5 million more in the 2017 budget, in reoccurring revenue than we did in 2010 budget, and every year, that is going to grow more and more. It continues to go up, because practically speaking, so let's think about Lake Como. Practically speaking, once you get rid of your police department, you're not going to bring it back. And the only other two towns that can be providing services to them are Wall Township and Spring Lake. And not for nothing, neither one of them wants to do it. So it's an opportunity for us, and we also always thought, and we talked about the chief, or talked about this with the chief, was that if we didn't do it, and they didn't have a police department, the headaches weren't going to be in Spring Lake or in Wall. The headaches are going to be in our town anyway, so we'd be dealing with a town that didn't have a police department anyway. So that revenue is locked up for at least another nine years. And then when that time comes, we'll do, assuming things aren't drastically different, that will renew itself. So we've put ourselves on a path of creating additional revenue outside of property taxes. Now, one of the things you'll hear me talk about, and why I think it's so important, is our redevelopment in town. And I'll give you a good example. So Fifth and Main, that's the old Avens and Hamptons. When Avens and Hamptons was there, they paid about $33,000 in their property taxes. We garnered $11,000 of that. Somebody went to the school, somebody went to the camp. But for what the Mayor of Belmar controlled, we received about $11,000. In this year, we're going to receive $59,000 from that new building that's there, that they did a great job constructing. That's reoccurring revenue that's never going to go away. Another great place to point to is somewhere like the old Freedman's Building, which is now the micro burry. People bought that, and they put a tremendous amount of money into it. With this new rent revaluation, their property taxes are going to go up $16,000. Back in 2010, before I became Mayor, Freedman's was pretty run down. We had the Board of Health shutting them down on occasion because they had road infestation. It was an eyesore to the neighborhood. Today, they put, with their own private dollars, the operators put in millions of dollars, and now it expands our commercial tax base and generates more revenue for all of us. and now it expands our commercial tax base and generates more revenue for all of us. Now, the other part of our financial strength is our, how we manage our debt load. After Sandy, we took on a tremendous amount of debt in cleaning up and rebuilding. Uh, you know, we were something this town had never seen before, and we cleaned up. Cleaned up? We cleaned up, and we are rebuilding and have rebuilt from right where. Adhering to modern codes and standards. We're not, we're not doing things on the cheap. Because you'll just have to redo it later anyway. There's a pretty simple maxim in life that you get for your debt. Now, in this case, FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Administration, has been reimbursing us and reimbursing us, and we've been very aggressively collecting it. There are still millions of dollars that we are fighting for. Most recently, you may have heard, we got another $800,000 that Colleen had been fighting for uh, just in, uh, I think it was announced in November or December. And we're continuing to get more money. We're gonna be fighting for receiving money from FEMA for sand recovery, I would guess for the next three to four years. It's gonna take a while, but the money's there. The other place on a federal level where we're gonna recruit money is from housing and urban development. They're the ones who are actually financing or paying for the pipe that's gonna be in the southern part of town that we're gonna start building this year. We're looking to go to bid out maybe sometime in February. So when you look at our, our total debt that is on the taxpayers, so in other words, I mentioned before, we did about $7 million in water infrastructure. $7 million. That's, uh, bonds that are put against the water sewer department. The water sewer department is financed, funded through your water bill. When do you think Belmar uses the most water? The summer. Most of the water we use in the summer is from the year-round taxpayers. It's from folks who either own second homes or renters. Uh, I'll tell you, one of the biggest users of the water, as you'd imagine, is the micro burry in town. Can't make beer without water. So it allows us to, to put in new infrastructure, but not put that burden on the taxpayers themselves, but to spread it out among all the water sewer payers, some who are year-round and a lot who are not. The other place we have a, a good amount of debt is up in the beachfront. As we know, the beachfront has been doing amazing the last couple of years. One of the things we've noticed was a decrease in daily badges, but an increase in seasonal badges. Particularly an increase in senior badges. Gotta raise the price of those senior badges. RC, oh, okay. Hey, off the ground. But one of the, one of the things that, 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 that we've always looked at, it's more anecdotal, but now we can actually put some quantitative analysis to it, is that we have more families coming to the Belmar beach. When you get daylights, you get someone who comes here, then maybe next time they go to Avebury, then they go to Avon, maybe Spring Lake, maybe Point Pleasant. When someone buys a seasonal badge, right, Lamada buys a seasonal badge, they're coming here and this is their beach. And they're bringing their kids to this beach. And they're less likely to leave their litter behind because it's their beach. So we're very encouraged that we're having more people buy seasonal beach badges. And our seasonal beach badge price is very reasonable, $55. We're a lot lower than any town around us. I think Spring Lake is twice our cost. So we're very reasonable, we're very accommodating. We have more playground equipment on our beachfront than any other beach town from Sandy Hook down to Cape Town. You know, one of the things we pride ourselves on are having the cleanest bathrooms at the beachfront. These are things that attract families that wanna enjoy either a day or maybe a week at the beach. So we've really made investments in that. Uh, we've also rebuilt the entire boardwalk. We have more beach replenishment now than there before. And the nice thing about the beach replenishment was in the past, the town used to have to pay for a portion of that beach replenishment. When we got the beach replenishment this time, the Army Corps of Engineers paid 100%. Not the beach utility, not the residents of the borough of Belmar. The Army Corps of Engineers paid for every time. So the, the debt that we have up on the beachfront is all gonna be paid for either by FEMA, by insurance money for the pavilions, or by the folks who buy the beach badges that come to our town, which more of them are becoming seasonal beach badge holders, which I think is a good indication for where we're going as a more family-friendly beach town in the summer months. So when, when you get down to the debt that we have that's on the taxpayers, it's approximately $3.2 million. That's it. For our town, it's about $3.2 million, which is extremely negative. It's extremely low. And one of the federal arbiters of municipal debt, uh, a, a good independent voice is Moody's Investor Services. So you've heard of folks who rate things, Moody's, S and A, Fitch, in our case, Moody's. Moody's used to rate us AA3 with a negative outlook. The negative outlook was put on our debt after Sandy, as it was put on the debt of every shore town in Monmouth, Ocean, Atlantic, Cape Town County, because they needed to see how were these towns gonna come back after. What was it gonna be like? What was the interaction with the, the state government like, or the county, or the federal government? How are these towns gonna recover? Once we had the opportunity to start through the process of rebuilding, reconstructing, and then repaying, uh, Moody's removed that negative outlook, and now we have, we're back to an AA3, uh, which is a high-quality and very low-risk credit. So I'm gonna read right this next. "The affirmation of AA3 reflects the borough's moderately sized tax base, average socioeconomic profile, and strong finances. The removal of negative outlook reflects the borough's improved finances and successful recovery from Hurricane Sandy. Our strengths include solid wealth levels and stable financial profile. We expect the borough's financial position to remain strong due to historically stable financial operations and healthy reserve levels." You contributed a lot of that to our Chief Financial Officer, Robin Kirk. "The strong recovery from Hurricane Sandy is reflective of the, in the positive performance of the beach utility. Given the significant damage the boroughs sustained during the storm and the borough's heavy reliance on tourism, the strong performance of the beach utility is, I'm sorry. Yeah, the strong performance of the beach utility is strongly credit positive." So in 2015, we set our record up at the beachfront. In 2016, we were about 1% off that record. So it's, it's not as if we're, we're hitting peaks and troughs anymore. We've kind of leveled out. And again, when you look at more people buying seasonal beach badges and more people buying them sooner, it's a bit of insurance policy for inclement weather. Because one of my concerns is to ensure that taxpayers are never, ever on the hook for operating the beachfront. Because I can tell you, if beachfront expenses exceed beachfront revenues, it is borne 100% by the taxpayers in Belmar. There's no county funds that come in to help you, there's no state funds, there's no federal funds. It's 100% borne by the taxpayers. So I think it's important for us to always have healthy finances up on the beachfront and a good surplus moving forward on the beachfront, and a way to pay off the debt that we have up there through FEMA, insurance, and also through the folks who use, the middle-class families that come from all over New Jersey and other states that use our beachfront. Now, one of the projects that we're looking at for 2000, or let me, let me backtrack. So out of that 3.2 million, there was another $500,000 bond for sidewalk improvements. Some of you may have gotten a, may have wanted to voluntarily analyze for sidewalk improvement. Some of you may have gotten a letter from the town saying that you need to, um, improve your sidewalk for whatever deficiency. Um, you know, we're a very walkable community. We wanna make it as safe as possible for people to walk on sidewalks. And, you know, anytime you see a mother with a stroller in the street or someone pushing a wheelchair in the street because the sidewalk is, is uneven and broken, I think that's wrong. Sidewalks are the responsibility of the homeowner. The town has a right of way into that area, but it's a responsibility of the homeowner. So we put together a bond program where it said, listen, we'll go out and we'll get a contractor at the best price possible to redo your sidewalks at the best price possible for you, and you repay us what it costs over a five-year period, zero interest. So let's say you have to replace your sidewalk, and I'm just gonna pull it up. You have to replace your sidewalk and it costs a total of $1,500, $1,500. All right, that gets done, we front you the money for it, contract gets paid, and then every year for the next five years, you would pay back the town $300 a year. Very fair. It's a voluntary program. If you don't wanna be part of the program, you don't have to. But if your sidewalk is in disrepair, by code, you still have to repair it. So we think it's a good program because it'll be not cheaper for you. You have to do it anyway, but maybe you're like, this is my brother-in-law's a mason, I gotta use him. I don't wanna be part of your program. Okay, no problem. Now, if you don't wanna be part of the program and your sidewalk was disrepair, and you just say, "To hell with you all, I'm not fixing my sidewalk", well then Frank Sinelli is gonna come by, use his ticket, and he's gonna start writing. So we want to make improvements in the sidewalks, we want to do it in a gentle, subtle way. But if Frank the Hammer Sinelli needs to come out and issue you a summons, that's going to happen as well. We're gonna give people plenty of notice ahead of time. But it's important for us to have sidewalks that are very walkable and safe in our community. So that's, again, if you included that, then you'd be at the 3.7, right? Another project that we made in town after Sandy that had no funding whatsoever, that's borne 100% by the taxpayers, is the outflow pipe from Silver Lake that runs north on A Street to the Shore River. One of the issues we saw after Sandy was, uh, Belmar is a hole. If water comes over Ocean Avenue, it collects around Silver Lake and it has absolutely nowhere to go. The pipe under Ocean Avenue leading out to the ocean was shot.
It is shot.
It's, it's a disaster. And, and it's not, it's not in a position where we can fix it at a, at a reasonable cost. So we put a line out to Silver Lake, which anytime during the day, not anytime, but at certain times during the day when the tide's low enough, our Department of Public Works can go out there, inspect it, make sure it doesn't block in it. And then we have the ability to drain the lake quickly ahead of a storm. And not only just a hurricane, I mean a bad rainstorm. Uh, you know, in 2005, we had a, a bad thunderstorm where that whole thing flooded and everyone around there ended up losing their cars because of how quickly the water came up and had nowhere to go. So we can now drain the lake faster in the, uh, in anticipation of a storm, and we can also drain it faster after a storm, during an after storm. That costs about $1.7 million. No FEMA money, no HUD money, no money to support us on that. That project is borne 100% by the taxpayers involved. But we thought it was important for the safety and security of so many people who lived around that area to put that in there. So that's when I talked about the 3.2 million. A large portion of that was that pipe that had to hit that anyway. One of the projects we're gonna be looking at this year, which would add debt, is our playgrounds, our playground equipment. You look at the playground on 15th and A or the playground around Silver Lake, they're shot. I mean, when you leave here today, you're gonna walk past the playground here at Belmar Elementary School, which is fantastic. It's a modern playground, it's, it's safe, it's, it's exactly what we need for children to play on in our town. If you go with the playground by McClearing Park, yeah, beautiful playground, safe, well-built, well-done. We're gonna do the same type of playground at 15th Avenue and at Silver Lake. The other project we're gonna put into this on will be the fence around Memorial Field. So if you know where that is, right across from the school, there's this green ugly fence that, again, is shot. Our Department of Public Works repairs it, they do the best they can, but just like the underground water pipes, nothing just fixes itself, nothing repairs itself. You have to make investments in this. And we think it's important and useful to make investments in recreation like playground equipment and also fences around what's arguably our largest park where kids play soccer, softball, and baseball. So we'll look to do that, you know, the first, uh, the first quarter, second quarter of 2000 and, uh, 2017. Now, let's talk, oh, before I get to that, uh, I do wanna talk about, uh, the, the sidewalk assessment. So you may have seen that they stopped with the sidewalks. Uh, they're gonna pick that back up once the weather is more temperate on a regular basis. So, you know, did we have weather this week where it was 62 degrees? Yeah. Tomorrow it may be 25. So once it became, becomes a little more steady, um, on a regular basis, is when they'll see them back out there pouring concrete, uh, and, and fixing up those sidewalks. Uh, but they should be done by summer? That was not a very confident, yeah, from Colleen, but. Like, yeah, sure. Also, uh, McClearing Park, the tennis courts, everyone plays tennis, great sport. Tennis courts at McClearing Park are, are in real disrepair, I mean, big cracks, again, safety problems. Um, that's gonna be going out to bid in the next couple of months as well. Uh, one of the challenges we have at McClearing Park is that it's, it's a DEP Green Acres site, so you have to get additional permitting through the Department of Environmental Protection. And I can just tell you, nothing's ever simply goes quicker. Uh, and last thing is the, uh, Main Street, uh, the Streetscape Project on Main Street. Um, you know, we wanted to wait till we had the grant money before we moved forward. We knew there was grant money there, uh, to do the lighting and the streetscaping from, uh, 10th Avenue north to Avon. So, you know, those really, um, nice-looking black lights that we have from 16th Avenue to 10th, uh, and also on 10th Avenue going up, um, towards railroad tracks. Uh, now they're gonna be going from, uh, 10th Avenue north as well. Uh, we have to work with JCP now on a few things, but, uh, that should be completed and those lights flipped on, uh, by summer as well. So now, I, I do wanna talk about the townwide, uh, tax assessment and, and how we got to where we are. So Belmar has not had a tax assessment, a full rebound, uh, in, in 15 years? In about 15 years. Now, our tax assessor is a gentleman named Ed Malane. And I talked to him that last year, and he said, Matt, in 2015, I forget, it was like four or six, we had about four or six successful tax appeals. So why are we gonna revow? If we had 200 successful tax appeals, then yeah, then you do a revow, you do something wrong. But out of 3,600 properties, right, four to six is, is a rounding error at best. The Monmouth County Tax Board insisted that we have a tax appeal. Myself, Council President of the Government, Councilman Brennan, Councilman Nicolay, Councilman Keon Blackmer, all said, we disagree. We don't wanna do it. We don't think it's necessary. It's gonna cost us like $250,000 plus to hire a company to come in, and it's unnecessary for our town. Monmouth County Tax Board took us to court. A judge sided with them. They're like, well, Belmar, you haven't done it however many years, you have to do your rebound. They're like, "Well, Belmar, you haven't done it however many years, you have to do your rebound." We ignored them. We said, "We don't want to do it." The judge gave an order, and we told our attorneys, "Fight it. Fight it." Then the judge told our attorneys that if we don't do it, there's gonna be a bench worn out for all of our wrists. As much as I love you all, and I love this town, calling my wife up for bail money to get me out of jail is really not much. So we have to move forward with it in this year. The company they chose, we didn't want. But because of all those reasons with the Monmouth County Tax Board, the one we have is the one we got. I can tell you that myself, and I don't want to speak for Councilman Volker, I haven't talked about it, but the other members of council completely disagree with this rebound. It's unnecessary. We fought it as long as we can. Whatever we can do to help you with the poor appraisal of your property, we will do. Because again, we think this is an absolute disaster. That said, I want to take you through, because I got, of all the things I got questions, this is the number one. I want to take you through what it means to us. So you have a good understanding as well. So they valued the whole town, previously was valued, all the property at about, and I'm gonna round here, I'm gonna round down with it, about $1 billion. Actually, our one square mile town was worth. Today, they value it at approximately $1.6 billion. So that's a 60% increase. If your tax assessment went up 60%, you will not see any change in your taxes. Again, the whole town was valued at $1 billion, it's now valued at $1.6 billion, a 60% increase. If your tax assessment, your property assessment, is 60% above what it was before, you will see no increase in your taxes. If your assessed value is above 60%, you will see an increase in your taxes. If your assessment is below 60%, you will see a decrease in your taxes. The old, I have a quick question. So a quick question was, which taxes? There are three components to your tax bill: municipal, county, and school. It's taking all together. Now, if Belmar raised taxes, which we're not gonna do, that would exacerbate the situation significantly. We have no taxes. The county has said that they are not gonna raise taxes. I told them. The school, we don't know about. The only thing that I as mayor and the council control is the municipal portion of the tax bill, which is essentially about the same. When you look at the overall number of taxpayers, and again, this is playing a little fast with numbers, about a third go up in taxes, about a third go down, and about a third stay the same. But the amount of revenue that Belmar government takes for municipal services is the same. So the pie, the pool, is the same. The question is, who's getting some money back? Who's putting more money in? And who's completely unchanged? One of the programs we looked at, which isn't gonna help everyone, but it'll help some, is the senior freeze. Here's how the senior freeze program works, and there's a handout on this, and if you call Borough Hall, we'll help you as well. Here's how the senior freeze works. You gotta be 65 years or over. Can't just lie. You gotta be 65 years or over. And if your annual income is, according to 2016, and this can change, is less than $70,000, your reportable income is less than $70,000, then whatever your taxes went up, you will get a rebate from the state of New Jersey. But you gotta apply to that. It doesn't just happen automatically, they don't know. So let's say your taxes were $4,000 before the rebound. Rebound comes, now they're $5,500. You got a $1,500 taxes that the Monmouth County Tax Board is thinking you pay $1,500 more a year. You pay that to the town, you submit that along with your application, I'm sure your tax return, to the state, and they will refund you $1,500. They freeze it at the $4,000 threshold amount. Now, we have some families in town where we have multiple generations. So you have maybe, you know, grandma and grandpa own a house, then their kids live with them, and they're raising their kids. We have multiple generations. It goes off of who's on title. So if the person on title is 65 or over, you're good. If there's one person on title who's under 65, you're not. So take a look at that as well. Again, Robin Kirk is here to help you with that. Maybe not today, if you guys are busy and stuff, but she will be in Borough Hall and will help other people on notice that the number one concern now at Borough Hall is helping people, one, either fill out their tax freeze, or two, figure out a way to fight the tax, the property valuation that they were given. Now, I will tell you this too, because you gotta be thoughtful about this. I believe the Monmouth County Tax Board makes it as difficult as possible for you to challenge your property value. They do. They charge you $100 just to file. And then, I mean, you're gonna, maybe not. Don't feel bad if you need help. Don't give up, and reach out to us if you need help. We're here to help. We want to help. But you gotta feel this, and you have to have an honest conversation with yourself. If you said to yourself, "So, how much would I put my house on the market for today if I was selling?" And if that number is close to what they're telling you your property value is, you're gonna have a tough time being successful in that appeal. I'm just being honest with you. If it's far below what they have, if you're like, "I know my neighbor sold for 410 and their value is at 600," fight it. I would also tell you, if you bought it for 600, and their value is at 500, and it used to be assessed at 300, will you go in there and say, "Hey, this isn't right"? They could tell you, "You know, you're right. You should be 590." So they're, I don't have to put this down, they're not there to help. They're gonna tell you, "We're just being fair," which I don't think that they're not being fair, they're not being malicious. But at the same time, they're gonna go by the book. So again, I would have an honest conversation with yourself, you know, you can go online and see what other houses around you sold for. Everyone here knows your neighbors. Just talk to them. And say, "Listen, you know, if I was gonna put my house on the market, I've lived here for the last 30 years, I bought it for $175. How much do you think I could get for it?" If they're like, "800," and your value's 700. I'm not saying not to fight it, but you gotta be real. And I will use one real-world example. So a woman contacted me, and I'll get around it. So 403 B Street, very nice location. She's valued at like 710. She's got a 40 by 100 lot, three-bedroom, I think, one half end. One of the reasons why they valued her so high was that someone next door sold a bed and breakfast with 15 bedrooms. Fun afternoon. So, so again, Robin's here, and I also want to, I want to give you another important piece of information. The old tax rate, what you multiplied your value by, was 1.91%. That's the old. That's gone. Forget all of that. The new tax rate that you multiply your value on is 1.188. Say it again. 1.188. So you add up what the land value is, what the structure value is, and come to a sum of that, multiply that by 1.188, then you divide that number by 100, and that would be your taxes in 2017. So as the value of the whole town went up 60%, the tax rate came down significantly to offset that. Because remember, the pie, it's the same thing, it's the same, it's the same number. There's no tax increase for municipality. So I'm gonna, again, Robin will be here, you'll be at Borough Hall. I also want to give you two other things, if you have any questions on that or really anything else, but particularly that, because I know it's very topical. And that's my email and my cellphone. So my email, super easy, easiest email you'll ever have. Mayor@belmar.com. Can't get easier than that, right? Mayor@belmar.com. And my cellphone number, which I think is also pretty easy, is simply 732-681-1300. It's 732-681-1300. So with those two pieces of information, if by chance you do go to Borough Hall, and if by chance you're not satisfied with whatever you got there, email me, call me, it's right in my pocket. That's the world we live in. It's right in my pocket. I'll be able to have someone address your concerns as you go through this process. Again, you can use mine for anything else, but most importantly right now, it's for the tax audit. Jesus, 1110. Sure, I'll look at the equation again. So on the card, you'll have two numbers that give you the land value and the structure value. You add those together, and you get a certain number. You take that number, you multiply that number by 1.188. You get 1.188. That's gonna give you a huge number. Divide that by 100, and that'll give you a number somewhere in 1,000. And that's what your property taxes are for 2017. And estimate, because we're still waiting on, we're still waiting on the county and the school, but if all else is equal, we know we're equal. If all else is equal, then that's what you're gonna look at. Now, another question I got was on the tax rate. Is the tax rate going to go up next year? The tax rate should not go up next year. It's up to the mayor and council, it's up to the freerholders, and it's up to the school board as to whether or not the tax rate goes up. I would tell you, in 2017, for the municipal side, our tax rate is not going. I'm gonna work for 2017 to ensure that in 2018, the tax rate does not go up. The other two parts of your property tax bill are independent of the mayor and council. And again, if you go back to what I said before, is why, you know, we're in such strong financial footing, that's why the tax rate won't go up. Be nice with the tax rate like that. So, shoot. Again, it's 1110, I'm sorry about that. But I do want to get through some of the questions outside of the, outside of the property tax assessment. But before I do that, I'm gonna sort of deviate a bit. If someone has a mic. Does anyone have a question that's somewhat broad-based about the tax assessment? Again, if it's specific to you and a calculation, maybe we can handle it afterwards. But if you have something more broad-based, before we get off that topic, I'd love to talk about it. Yes?
My question is, at one point, Belmar was part of that pilot program, and you, Belmar had opted out. But I just want to make sure that you did not intend to opt back in.
No.
I just wanted to know, I don't even suggest we had a lawyer for the tax bill?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that right now. I would suggest working with us through the process. Hopefully it doesn't come to that, but I would, I would suggest applying, and real fast, Robin, what's, do we know the last date? 23rd? So this is an important date. February 23rd is the last day to appeal. February 23rd. So if you're going on vacation, go on the 23rd. I mean, now, on February 23rd, if you're going to appeal, this is your window of opportunity to appeal.
You should make an appointment then.
First, things to be done, online, Monmouth County website, they have a link on our website, Monmouth County website, they have a link right online to file an appeal. You can go right there first, and then if you need help, find your help, things like that, create a wide field, you can apply.
And let me just say what Robin said just over here. So on our website is a link to the Monmouth County website for the, I guess, Monmouth County Tax Board. And that's where you start the appeal process. So if you want to do this and never talk to anyone at Borough Hall, that's great, that's fine. You can totally do it yourself. Again, if you need any assistance, any help, please, don't wait, don't hesitate, reach out to us immediately. If for some reason someone's gonna get in touch with you, email me, call me. This is a top priority. It's literally a sprint between now and February 23rd, which is, call it six weeks from now.
Hi, I just have a general tax revenue question. I wanted to ask about the redevelopment projects, you know, the one that's gonna be on 10th Avenue, over by the tracks, and then the new one on Main Street. And before I ask my specific question, I just want to clarify, are we deemed an area in need of redevelopment or rehabilitation?
We get that, but I just want to stay on tax assessment.
Well, this has to do with tax, general tax revenue. And you know, you were talking about like $59,000 in reoccurring revenue from the Barrett DePev's building on 5th and Main. I know he's building, and I am really happy about what Mr. Barrett DePev and Mr. Riehro see have brought to Belmar. I'm more of a safe person actually, so I like more housing, including affordable housing, and shops and restaurants and everything. But I'm interested in understanding the pilot program, or, you know, these people don't know, payment in lieu of taxes. So I understand that the pilot program has rules that make the developers pay, us, the municipality, and the county, but it doesn't mandate that developers pay the school. However, I also know that we, Belmar, you, Mr. Mayor, have the discretion to craft a deal, provided we follow the mandated payment laws. So for example, we can maybe shorten the time period that the pilot programs infect, and we can make sure that we generate revenue for the school. So my specific question is, do you have an agreement with the developers that generate revenue for our school?
Pilot program is designed for municipalities to take advantage of the redevelopment zones and generate additional revenue for the town. In most cases, it's not for housing projects. And if there's any housing component, it's usually small housing, it's usually scaled down. An example would be the Marina Building. An example would be the Marina Building. The Marina Building is gonna pay rent. They're not gonna pay property taxes. The Marina Building's not gonna generate any revenue for the county or for the school. Now, for the county, that's too bad. For the school, you know, the, the building's not gonna send any children to the school for services. So I would tell you that I'd be open to, you know, ways to, to generate more revenue for the school, whether that's within the context of a pilot program or not, but I think that the, there are other opportunities. I, I don't know the, the school budget as, as well as I know municipal budget, but I think that there are opportunities for us to partner. I mean, one of the things, I know council president advocate, council president, the governor advocated for it, we're able to accomplish was to open up the playground equipment out here, the pass that was closed on the weekends to children and all, and one of the things he was successful in doing was advocating on the path. So I think that we have a good partnership with the, with the school, and if there's an opportunity for us to generate revenue through agreements with the developers, I would certainly be open to that.
The two buildings that I'm talking about have housing. They have, do you know how many units there are? I'm sure you do.
The one on Fifth and Main, I believe, is 16, and no school age children.
16, and wait, they don't allow families?
Well, they allow families, it's just there's no school age children.
Oh, no, I mean the two new buildings. They're, they allow, there's affordable housing and there's regular housing in, in the two new redevelopment buildings that I mentioned. How many units? I'm sure there's, you know, there's gonna be storefronts underneath and housing above.
The building you're talking about on Fifth and Main has 16 units. There are no school age children in those buildings.
Now, the building that hasn't been built yet, there are nine?
A five.
Oh, so, but it was all unveiled and everything, no?
No.
Okay, so no, nothing has been negotiated yet with the developers?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I think this woman had a question about the tax we filed.
Yeah, just a quick question. Should we make a personal appointment with Robin to go over appeal questions, or just stroll in? What's the best way?
Well, well, I, I would, you know, I would, I would call the office, I would, I would try to make an appointment. I think I'd need strolling in. And again, you may look at the website, it may be a piece of cake for you, you may never have to talk to her. The nice thing is, she's there as, as a resource in case you do have any questions on it, or however we can help you through the process.
Thank you.
Would you mind passing the mic? Right, you're fired.
Uh, thank you. Has the Monmouth County website, the tax assessments, has that been updated with the new amount and how much everybody's taxes is paying?
Yes, it, yes it has. Do we, do we have that link as well? Yeah, there's a link on our website, you can do that as well. And I'll make sure we put that on, on the splash page, on the first page of the website, so you can, you can take a look at it.
I've seen that, I've seen that tax appeal form, and I would recommend it to Dr. Robbins, it's complicated. The question I have is, as far as the tax freeze is concerned, is 2015 the base year?
As far as the tax, do you really have one?
Well, yeah, I'll answer that, Robin.
I know we already have a lot of seniors in town that applied senior freeze years ago when it started. It would depend on the first year that you actually applied, if you had not applied. You should apply during the spring of 17. You would file for your 2015 and 16 taxes that you paid, 2015 then becomes your base year. And then every year after that, you would get a new application, you refile, and it would always go back to that 2015 base year in comparison. Correct? No matter.
The question was, you need to be 65 to start the application process, yes?
I see people get following questions now when they're talking to the presidents. The, so if 2015 were your, were your base year, and in looking at the income, if you had capital gains in that year that put you way over the income level, I assume then you wouldn't, that capital gains will count as reportable income. Would that be correct?
Yes, it would.
Remember that breakfast we talked about?
And, and, and one other thing I want, I want to read real fast, because I just, this, this may, this may not be good news for some people. So here's, here's the four points of eligibility for senior freeze. One, New Jersey's senior citizens over the age of 65, income limit is announced every year, but for 2016, it was 70,000 or less. You must have lived in New Jersey continuously since 2004. You must have lived in New Jersey continuously since 2004, and you must have owned the home you were applying for since 2014. So that's as of 2016. I don't know if that 2014 number moves to 2015, the 2004 was up to 2005, but those are the guidelines for the most recent senior tax rules. Absolutely has to be your primary residence, correct? Cannot be an investment property, cannot be a, a second.
Hi, on the reassessment card, there was a phone number, I called it, and was told that questions regarding assessment needed to be made on Mondays between 9:00 and 11:00, and then emails would not be answered. Did I call them on the other?
So typically speaking, we have, we have a tax assessor, he works on Mondays. He doesn't answer emails. But usually that's not a problem, because again, we have four to six successful kids a year. It's very, very rare. This is an extreme circumstance that happens once every 14, 15, 16 years. So that's why I would tell you, great question. If you have that card, if, if you want faster service than that, which I think you would, I would, I would contact Robin sooner. Again, if, if for some reason she's tied up with stuff, if you're, you want, I give you my cellphone, I give you my email. I'm not as smart as Robin, but I can, you know, figure out a few things that, that are helpful as well. And I would definitely make myself available. Please, sir.
We did major renovations in 2016, so that our assessed value is significantly higher, which I wish you would also understand, but that puts us in a position where we can't compare old assessment with new assessment, because we're talking apples and oranges, nor can we compare our assessment with any success. Can you give me some guidance as to how to determine the fairness of our assessment under these circumstances?
So you, you did major renovations in 2016?
Correct. Which aren't completed, we have a tour.
Did they come assess your property after the, the renovation was done? And you believe that they over-assessed your value?
No. We don't know. We have no, no things to compare.
That's a great question. I mean, I, I would, I would, I would ask yourself if...
So?
If I was putting the house on the market today, how much would I ask for? And if that's close to what they revalued at, that, that's, that's a tough one. If you're like, you know, I would sell it for 600, they're putting it at 800, that's a no-brank. And again, if you're over, they're under, you know, then, then you gotta take that into account as well. But I would, I mean, I would tell you to, to reach out to Robin. Again, you can email or, or call me with the Morse's address, not asking for your now, and we can take a look and say, you know, here's, you know, you got a, you got a good, good chance of beating this because X, Y, Z, or, listen, they, they, they got you dead on, these are the renovations you did, you made these improvements, that's where they, you know. I know that they did have meetings with some folks at the most inconvenient time possible, right? I mean, I think it was between Christmas and New Year's, which, you know, is obviously disappointing, but again, this is not a company we hired, you know, I'll be honest with you, companies on their criminal investigation as part of the, by the, you know, right? So, so that's why I would, I would, I would be aggressive, and if you want to be helpful, you'd be aggressive in challenging that. But again, you know, you have to have an honest, an honest conversation with someone as to whether you can sell it or not.
I went up to Berwick Hall on Monday, the guy was very nice, but with you, because I recommend we can open the website, which is one of those things, it's so easy a kid could do. Well, they had a kid, they had a kid there, because I couldn't make hide the head. And so I did get a kid, which was my son, and he couldn't make hide the head. Well, we did get on it, I filed the appeal, it's not easy, and they didn't, like, few words, like, to put down, like, like, I'm trying to explain it, like, my house, I have a easement and all this other stuff, which is not a selling, and I really couldn't write much in it, so they put like two sentences in the appeal process. So I mean, I just filed it anyway, I don't, you know, and the date, I believe, on the appeal form, it said the latest was January, so I don't think it's February.
No, no, it was, it was January, and we were successful in getting that pushback to February 23rd, so it is February 23rd. But you make a good point, too. Just whatever, whatever you do, you gotta appeal. And then, and then once you appeal, you can, you can come back, you can listen, you can fight, but if you wait until Jan, February 24th, it doesn't matter how strong your case is, so even if you're like, I'm not 100% sure, just appeal.
I did, I already filed.
Right, and I, I, but I think you're a very good example of someone who used his son to, uh...
You know what? He fully became useful for some.
And it cost money.
Do you know how they came up with the land values? Because when you look at the card, like, in our case, the land went up over like 100% and the property went up maybe 20%. I mean, how, it seems like they insulated themselves against appeals, because how do you appeal the value of the land?
Land values were unfortunately based on...
Can't hear. Can you repeat that?
Okay.
Can't hear. We can't hear. No, but, but, but his question was, was, how do they come up with the value of the land? Because, and I think he's right, you know, if, if, if you appeal the value of your structure, you can say, but I only have three bedrooms, I only have this. The land is the land, you can't, how do you, you can't really, if they make it, again, in my humble estimation, they make it as difficult as possible for people to challenge these valuations, and I think they put a lot of it on the value of the land to make it as, as difficult. But, but you can still, you can still challenge it. You, you still can. Again, the, the one I, the one I referenced before was where they used the sale of a bed and breakfast with 15 bedrooms next to, are you?
A table.
Oh, hey, this is her! So anyway, so she's, she's that classic case of someone who I think has a strong appeal, but without knowing about it, you may be right, they may have said, oh, no, the house, we, we valued that at 100. It's the land we're valuing at $600,000. So, so you're, you're, you're right, and that's, that's a good thing to know going into it, as to, as to how they, they put the land in that. But, but it is not, it is not a compromise.
What's the range in the town of a, of a 50 by 100 lot? You know, ours is like 550,000. Is that what they did for every lot in Belmar?
No, and that's, and that's a great, great question. So there, there's more value in the land the closer you get to the land, right? And I think, and I hate to point them out, but I think, you know, Mike Campbell's a great example. Mike lives on 7th Avenue by A Street. He's on Beach Block. That land is extremely valuable, much more valuable than it was 15 years ago, whereas, you know, if you live on further, more blocks away, you know, like E Street, he may have a nicer house, but they value the land less. The house may be the same, but he gets hammered because of the land. That, honestly, we don't know, we can find out for you, though, we can, we can find out, but, but I don't have an answer for you today. Let, let's go to Sheila.
I just have a question regarding easement, that he mentioned. We have easement property that isn't recorded in the town map, and they told me...
Say that again?
We have, on our property, we have 100 by 50. The back end, which backs up to 13th Avenue House, there's four houses that have easement. So 10 by 50 is not usable. There was a judgment back in 1999 saying it was not usable by anybody other than, no parking, no anything, only to access for those houses that you could get behind your house, because the parking is there. So that piece of property shouldn't be taxed less? And if it is, we're not getting that because Belmar's town map doesn't show the easement.
We can find out, and we don't have an answer for you today. I clearly never want you to tax us, but, but, but that's, that's a fair question.
Yeah, I was really actually giving it to the...
Easement, that's between individual property owners?
It's four houses that get to its property. Well, that's okay, we don't have to do an appeal or anything.
I think the best bet would be come in, talk to myself, I can forward information to the tax assessor. By the way, we're closed Monday, so don't look for that.
I pointed it out to him, and he told me to come to the office.
The realty agreement.
Oh, that, yeah, I pointed it out to him.
He's telling you to talk to the assessor director, he is the one only there on Monday mornings. I will answer questions the best I can afford, because I'm there five days a week. Anything I cannot respond to, I will then speak, following my next question.
But do I have to bring that for appeal?
At this point, talk to us first, give us one week, and then decide if we need to go and appeal. Then do what's called an error correction, and we're starting to find out the error.
We had actually met with the company, and we were successful in getting our assessment lower slightly, but we're still, we feel way overvalued, and it's basically on the land. My question is, and it's something that I had raised with them, is there were two vacant land sales that were considerably less than what they had valued at, and they were saying that they may not, they were MLS listed, and it's comparable as that we thought were in line with what we feel our properties were. Is there a reason why a vacant sale would be excluded in comparable?
I would use any sale. When you file that appeal, any sale that you come forward with, I would bring it with you.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Kirshom, I see you, you're from Wall Township, this is a Belmar Town Hall meeting, I'm not gonna call on you.
Okay, but it's a public meeting.
Understand, you're not, I'm not gonna call on you if you disrupt, you're gonna be removed. Anyone else in Belmar have a question?
Thanks a lot for having us, meeting, I think it's wonderful. But I looked at the appeal process, and it seems that...
Is the up on the left?
I'm sorry?
On the left.
Speaking to it, is that better? Close? Close, yeah. They have established an assessed value, which you've gotten in your postcard, which is accumulation of your property and, and your structure value. And it seems to me that if that falls within a 60 to 80% of what you feel and don't bother appealing... appealing, if it, if you think that the assessment is outside of that 60 to 80% range, in other words, if you feel like your building's worth $100,000 and they've assessed it for $100,000, that doesn't work and you have a right to appeal. I think, I think, I'm pretty sure so. If you, when you determine your, your hypothetical market value for your property, if the assessment is within 60 to 80%, which is the range that they seem to indicate on their form, probably might not be, have a legitimate appeal. But for instance, if, and, and some of the things that contribute to what the real property value is, which is compared to the sales, so, you know, that, that's what I gleaned from it, but I wouldn't profess to be at all the answers for it.
Yeah, but I would, I would still encourage people, uh, don't, don't be bashful about, about filing an appeal. What does my house do? If anyone on the title is younger than 65, you're not eligible. If, again, it goes, it goes off of who owns the property. So if, if, and, and, and anyone can live in a house. So again, if you have, you know, grandma owns the house, she's 70. Her children who are in their 40s, 50s live there with their children who are in their teens. As long as she's the one who's on the title, as long as her income is $70,000 or less, according to 2016, then you'd be eligible. But if mom is 75, the parent and kids thought it about, maybe what's going to happen to mom, let's, let's put someone on the title so we can protect the house, and someone's on who's 50, that's no good. No, the 70,000 is combined. So if it's husband and wife, uh, it'd be under 70,000. You report it. Yes, sir.
The assessment company came to our house. He walked through the house in five minutes, emptied the number of rooms, went to the basement, took the information of the water heater to prove he was there. Okay? The team gave us an assessed value, strongly disagreeing. They made the appointment to meet the town offices in that 20 minute timeframe they give you. And after that review, I gave a load of information, load of accounts. The assessed value was lowered by about 10%. I still think it's a high zone of appeal. Does anyone who wants to know, there are attorneys who will take your appeal on a contingency basis. So it's something to consider as well, if you're afraid to do it.
And, and that's another good point. So if you went and you met with those folks during Christmas and New Year's and they introduced it 5 or 10%, if you're not happy with that, you can still appeal that on top of it. And, and I would encourage you to, to do that as well. Um, all right. I still have a, just a little bit of questions people emailed, but is there anything else on the tax assess? Yes?
It seems that the dividing up and dealing with each individual homeowner individually just gives them more power. Uh, is there any way to aggregate the, the, the appeal process and then consolidate it and get some economies of scale associated with that? Because if individually, everyone's going out to individual lawyers, striking individual appeals, trying to figure this out individually, um, you know, they win, right? So can something be done to try to aggregate everybody who, who has an issue? And I don't know whether or not I do or not, frankly. I haven't looked yet, so, so this isn't really for me personally, but just for everyone who's, who's got these issues.
I mean, I would tell you, that's what, that's what problems are. Um, that's what your, your borough officials are here for, is to aggregate through that. Because the one thing is, um, you know, if, 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 and again, if, if you're smart enough and you have a smart son, if you do it on your own, you know, I'm not trying to dissuade you, but, you know, if, if 10 people come to rob, there are going to be 10 different situations. She's going to figure out all 10. So when the 11th person comes, more than likely, she's going to have, you know, the knowledge of, okay, I saw this with the third one I did, here's how we addressed it. Oh, the vacant land issue? Oh, yeah, the, the right of way or the easement? Okay, here's how we handled that four days ago. So I, I would tell you that. Again, you know, I understand attorneys taking on a contingency, not dissuading them from doing it, but, you know, they're already charging $100 just to apply, you know? You don't want to end up spending more money on this stuff than you need to. And, and I'm, I'm telling you that it's a top priority for, for our administration to, to advocate on your behalf to, to win these. We're not going to win them all, but we'll fight for every single one, I can guarantee that. Just to... You need like theme music as it's coming on.
May you appeal just land value rather than the whole value? I have a problem with the house. I have a problem with the land.
Uh, you would, you would, you would appeal the whole thing, but you would structure your fight on the land value. So, so that's a good example of, you know, that, that's an individual case. Someone else may, you know, someone who's next to Tom may say, listen, it's, it's, it's the house, it's the structure I want to appeal, the land I'm okay with. So you have to sort of pick and choose your battles within your appeal. Um, but, you know, you never know. I would appeal the whole thing. What if, what if the structure goes from 150 to 120? You know, why not?
Were there land vacant lots that have sold in Belmar?
They, they, they're having, um, yeah, yeah, they're having. One of the things sometimes people will do is if they're selling a property and it's got a house on it, or they, you know, they'll, they'll knock the house down to reduce the amount of taxes they own, uh, and then they'll carry that, and then they'll sell it as a vacant land a year or two later if the market turns up. And it hurts us because we don't collect as much taxes as we did before they knocked the house down, but that's just the way the law works. So, yeah, we've had, we've had vacant land sales, uh, and, uh, and we can research what those were as well and how good they were. I think the woman...
I am, I was one of the few, I would let them inside my house and they actually measured probably about 60 square feet more than what my whole home is, which is not a large home. But I went to and I spoke with them and they just said, well, that's my opinion. If I like, I can hire a tax assessor and have them come in and, uh, they're assessed. So do you give a favor, I mean?
They, they told you to hire a tax assessor?
Yes, I said, we did. That's what you were here for. I said, I let you in and you measured my square footage. Look. And, uh, they told me that's my opinion. Even if Zillow's was more correct, then they did. And I showed them that. And they measured it, they, they showed it, you know, on the land. I mean, I'm paying low taxes, I get that, but it was a small house. And, um, but my taxes were not $1,000 that I had not paid.
Right. Yeah, I would, I mean, I would certainly appeal that. You're, by the way, you're not the first person, um, believe it or not, independent of this. I've had a lot of people, uh, get ahold of me, uh, either through email or, or phone calls. Charlie, someone had a question behind you. Um, and, uh, and, and they suffered the same issue where, uh, you know, they were, they had another 100, actually, and there is another 100 square feet that they were being assessed on that simply doesn't exist. Uh, so they're going to appeal. I would, I would encourage you to appeal. And then within that appeal is where you can demonstrate that they're off on 60 feet.
Hi, Matt. I happened to call the state this week and as far as the tax freeze goes, they told me the cutoff for 2016 was 87,000 some odd amount. And the cutoff date, you know, to appeal, not to appeal, to apply for the application would be between February and March to call.
Okay, we appreciate that. Again, the information we had was it's, uh, it's under 70,000. The information we had is 2015 was actually 87 and they lowered it to 70. Now this year, I look at the state, has no money, right? We know they're, they may lower it to 60 or 50. I, you know, I don't know. We can only just go up the information that we have based on, uh, based on the most recent, uh, most recent year. Any other questions on tax assessment? Yes, sir.
I just, you had said that the... Yeah, you had said that the overall assessments throughout the borough went up, I think, from 1 billion to 1.6 billion. The 0.6 billion times the difference in the tax rate, the 1.9 versus the 1.188, comes out somewhere, I think around $433 million, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? I mean, there's an overall collection increase due to the borough increase value. And I'm not sure how we benefit from that or, I may have the wrong numbers first, but...
Okay, first of all, you can't just take the difference between the two and multiply it by the 1.188. Take the entire amount and multiply it by the 1.188. It would still come out to the 20 million that's been collected since last year. Does that make sense?
Well, we have a higher value and there's a difference. Here's what... I think what everybody was kind of going by is we have a value, currently have a past value.
$1 billion.
Right. And well, if you just, you use the word house, but if you want to go by the, you take that value times 1.9%, right? Or the 1.9 value, I should say. And that gives you your tax rate. So then what happens is the taxes have either gone up or come down. We have a new assessed value and you've said that the way you get your taxes is by multiplying that by the 1.188.
The entire amount, not just the increase. Correct. I wasn't sure we were doing it correctly.
Okay, so what I...
Your house was valued at $100,000 and it's now valued at $150,000.
Right.
Last year, you would take the $100,000 and multiply it by 1.911%. Or you can divide by 100 and multiply by 1.911, whichever way you want to do it. $150,000, the entire amount by 1.188, not just the difference. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I just went about it a little different way, but there is an increase in the amount of taxes that are being collected based on that increased value of the borough.
Right, uh, um, they're not. I just, I just did a quick calculation. So if you take, if you take $1 billion, right? And you multiply that by 1.91, right? You come out and then, uh, and then divide it by 100. You come out with 19,100,000. 19,100,000, okay? Now you take 1.6 and you multiply that by 1.188.
Right.
Then you divide that by 100, you get 19,008,000. But basically, it's the same, 19,008,000, 19,100,000. When I say 1 billion, it's like a billion 54,000. When I say 1.6, it's like 1 billion 601 million, so. But basically, this, it's, remember, the, the, the pie is not increasing, the pie is not decreasing. It stays the same. That's why the rate went from 1.9 down to 1.188. In other words, if, if, if the, if the value went up 60%, more or less, the rate went down 60%. So you have an equalization.
Are we all the same way?
Behind us.
Yes.
My one question is if you're going to encourage a lot of people to appeal their taxes, if enough people do that, could that affect the, the, the final grade and then put the people who don't appeal at a disadvantage? Like the pies, like you said, the pies are going to stay the same, it's revenue neutral. So if you encourage everybody to appeal their taxes and the third people in town appeal their taxes, that could, you know, enough people appeal, then it's going to, you know, it almost makes you, you know, forces everybody to appeal because everybody else is appealing. Because we're all, you know, the, the pie stays the same, it's just what percentage of it everybody's paying. So, you know, I'm not sure that encouraging everybody to appeal helps us as a whole. It's a whole, we all have to, you know, pay for this nut. It's just a matter of who's paying how much of it. So, you know, so, um, you know, for the people that don't plan to appeal, we don't want to see a lot of other people appeal.
All right, don't listen to what he just... Any other questions on tax assessment? I'm still on the same thing. You good?
Hi, uh, this seems to have taken up the, the hour, but, um, I just did, I thought you said earlier that if you had a 60% increase in assessed value, that it would be basically a wash because of the lower tax rate. Is that correct? Something you said earlier?
Correct.
Okay, just did the math. We, we had a, about a 40% increase and I just did the equation, times it by 1.188, divided by 10 and, I'm sorry, 100. And it went up significantly and it was about a 40% increase. Okay. I don't know, but to be clear, if the whole town goes up 60% and at the same time you went up 40%, the amount you're paying in taxes is going down.
Talk to her, talk to her, I'll take a look at it.
It's, I mean, it's just math. It's not, and, and, and you should appeal. That's your motto. It's not about, it's not about, it's not about whether the amount goes up significantly or not, it's about whether it goes up beyond 60% of what it was before. So if, if, if you were, your house, easy numbers, if your house was $100,000 and you paid $2,000 in your taxes, your house goes up to 160,000, you will pay $2,000 in your Everyone get that? All right. We go down to help get told to move along here. All right, all right, so this is going to be like, uh, this is going to be a lightning round here. All right. So here's some of the questions people emailed me. How about having a few changing boots available at each bathroom on the beachfront?
No, no, no.
I got some applause and I got some no's. The question I got was, how about having a few changing boots available at the bathrooms? You're legally not allowed to change in a bathroom. That's not what it's designed for. However, can we run into folks, again, we talked about families before, who bring their kids out, they shower them down, they want to put them in relatively clean clothes and put them in the, in the, in the, in the car, you know, we want to see little naked butts running around, or you want to put them in the changing room? So it's something we're to look at, but the problem is trying to figure out how you do it because we don't want changing rooms to turn into something that, we don't want changing rooms to turn into... Here's one I got. Will there be food at the town hall meeting? Someone will email me that. Uh, another one, uh, least presence on our corner 16th and Main needs to increase especially during the summer nights on Tuesdays, eat the clock night. So we will address that. It doesn't... Uh, sewer plant. Everyone know we have a new sewer plant on the corner of 8th and Ocean? And I think this person is right. Gene Corey. Gene Corey is our spokesperson representative. If you have any problems with your sewer, just call Gene Corey. Email, email Gene Corey. Just give me that email, because I'm one guy in the world. Uh, but anyway, so this sewer plant, uh, which is across from the 711 on, on 8th and Ocean, sometimes you go by there and it, it reeks, uh, no doubt. Uh, so we are in touch, it's a great question. We are in touch with Gene Corey. We've emailed him several times. He hasn't cut back to us, uh, but, uh, I don't know whether they need to put additional filters or something, but, uh, I can't imagine come the summer months when it's 90...
but, uh, I can't imagine come the summer months when it's 95 and 90% humidity and a little breeze, uh, what that'll be like. Uh, parking. Got a few questions about parking. Um, you know, this one is somewhat easy. Uh, these folks are worried about parking at the marina. Again, that's going to increase significantly this summer over last summer because of getting rid of some of the dredging construction, um, and also because the construction site for the main building there takes up so much space. Once that building's open, that'll shrink and allow more parking, significantly more parking. Um, this person also asked about the dredging of Shark River. Uh, the dredger that was done was only for the Champ. So, if you go out there, you know, you go Route 35 at low tide, you go over the bridge, and it looks like you can walk, right, from Belmar into Neptune. Uh, I don't see that changing, uh, unfortunately. Um, there needs to be a major dredging operation. Uh, it's a state, um, channel, and it's a state area. Uh, if you go now or less deep, uh, there was a dredger going into the Shark River from the ocean. That's a federal channel. There's always, we do much better with federal funds clearing out areas than we do with state funds. Part of the reason is because the state has no money, they're broke. Um, so unfortunately, I, I don't see dredging at the Shark River done properly, not just a channel, uh, coming, really, anytime soon. Uh, also, uh, this person's a boat owner. Uh, he thinks the launching fee is a little too expensive. Uh, you know, there are other places where you can launch a boat. He says, like, in Delaware for $35 for the season. In Belmar, it's $350 for the season. I'll be honest with you, we try to run the marina as much of the business as possible. Uh, most of the folks who are launching their boats are coming from out of town, so it's an opportunity for us to grab some of that money. Uh, so I don't, I don't see us lowering, uh, lowering those fees. Senior, uh, the, the senior center. So, we've been in discussions with the Methodist Church on the corner of 7th and D. Uh, you know, they, they had been operating as a church, and then they had a, a Montessori school in there before Sandy, uh, Sandy, they got devastated, really wiped out. Um, they lost a lot of their congregation. But they do provide a real necessary service in that they have a soup kitchen in the back, and they have phenomenal equipment for it. Uh, at the same time, our Boy Scouts, I don't know if they're Girl Scouts, but I know the Boy Scouts for sure use their facilities. Um, right now, we're in a holding pattern. Uh, there's a bishop, uh, for the Methodist community that's out in Neptune, um, all from, right across from Jumper Brook, uh, the golf course. And we're sort of in a holding pattern. The deal we want to strike with them is that they, uh, essentially give us the building. We use it for a senior center, along with, on the first floor. And on the second floor, uh, put the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, things like that, and have a home for these organizations, uh, on a more regular basis, and do senior programming, things like that. Um, they give it to us, and then we pay the water sewer, we pay the electric, we pay the heating, you know, we'll maintain it, and then they'll also keep the kitchen for the, and I guess a food pantry as well? Or is it just a pantry? Drift stores as well, and a food pantry, and they keep all that. So, they're able to continue their, their service to the community, which benefits us. And we also take a building that is really not in any use right now, but it's not in bad shape, and turn it into something positive for our community. Uh, again, we're sort of working for that, and just like Catholic Church, Methodist Church, takes time. Um, what's the status of the skateboard park? Skateboard park. So, the skateboard park is open now, uh, but it's, it is closed by our police department because people go into the skateboard park who we don't really want in the skateboard park, uh, and do things that are not really permitted in the skateboard park. And then we lock it up, and then we get complaints from parents who say, "My, you know, little Johnny, who's 10 years old, can't use the skateboard park because it's closed." And they're right, the reason why it's closed is because we have 17th and 22-year-olds who are going in there at, you know, 1 o'clock on a Tuesday when they probably should be going to a job or going to school or something. Uh, so, uh, it, it's become quite a hassle. Now, we did reach out, and we asked, uh, for someone to operate. Because when this was originally put in, we were told, we were sold a bill of goods that, "Oh, it's going to be operated, these families can operate it, don't have to worry about it." None of it was true, none of it came to fruition. We reached out for someone, we said, "Yeah, you know, for the whole year you can operate it. Opening maybe is 500 bucks, don't get a little bit against you." And he said, "500 dollars? That's too much." So, you know, our whole take is if you're going to make money off of our property, you should pay the town something. Uh, so, right now, it is open, but unfortunately, it's subject to closure, depending on, uh, closure, or depending on the, uh, how, how the, uh, the people who use it, uh, act. Walls, okay. Ever Sandy had thought walls were going to be built up on the beach to protect the boardwalk from future storms? Why hasn't this been done? Uh, this also goes into dune questions. So, there's a giant dune project just south of us in Ocean County, northern Ocean County, all the way to southern Ocean County. Um, when we first designed the boardwalk, January, December 2012, January 2013, we designed it to have a steel wall, um, that would be driven into the ground, about, about 24-foot sheets, and driven into the ground about, you know, about 20 feet or so, and at four feet out, and be covered with sand, and that would protect the boardwalk. Uh, the Department of Environmental Protection will not permit us to do that. While, uh, we are trustees for the beach, the beach is not owned by the Borough of Belmar. We're responsible for it, we're responsible for maintaining it. Therefore, we can charge people to get on it for the maintenance, but we can't just do anything we want. So, uh, we are strictly prohibited from doing it, uh, which also, if they're not going to allow us to do it, that means there's no grant money for it. Uh, so, we're not going to build that, um, and we would never intend to build a large dune anyway. I mean, that was the other idea, if you look at Spring Lake, they have a big dune. The problem is, you drive down Ocean Avenue to Spring Lake, look at the dune. So, we changed the character of the beachfront. If we had some type of eight-foot dune or, or something large like Spring Lake has, uh, and based on the construction of the boardwalk, it's really not needed. Uh, I will tell you, the last really significant storm that we had was January of last year. And at that time, our Republican Public Works took all the, uh, not took all, but took a significant amount of the sand. And, and when I talk about sand, I mean the beach replenishment sand, that really ugly orange sand that's right in the middle from like, call it Spring Lake up to like, maybe 9th Avenue, it's horrible, it's terrible. Wood makes for an outstanding dune to protect against the ocean. It's like, it's like concrete. Uh, the problem is, it stains your white bathing suit orange, uh, which is unfortunate. But it really, um, it really holds up well as, as a form of hazard mitigation against the ocean, which in a lot of ways, as much as we look at the beach and see how great it is, it is a barrier that protects our homes and businesses and our livelihood from, from the Navy out there in North Atlantic. So, uh, so, yeah, so no walls. Uh, parking in the plaza. Um, this person has a business there, they would like permit parking for the tenants. I don't know if we're going to do that, um, because there are so many limited spaces, and I would be honest with you, and this is one of the challenges that we have with small business owners in Belmar, is they like to park right in front of their store, and then they complain that their customers can't park. Well, don't park in front of your store. Park, you know, we have parked a lot by, by the train tracks that people rarely use. You know, park a lot behind riding, park there, and then walk to your business and allow more cars to come and go on Ocean Avenue or on Main Street. Um, and I think the same thing would go for the plaza as well. Uh, also, a person complained that businesses use traffic cones to block off spaces to keep it for themselves. So, we will have our police and drive staff because, yeah, you can't, you can't, you can't use cones to block off spaces, uh, for your own business. Uh, all that parking in front of the Belmar Mall, everyone knows what I'm talking about, where, uh, Family Dollar is, that whole strip mall, that's all owned by you, the residents of the Borough of Belmar, it's not owned by any, any business or any landlord. Uh, so those, those shitty ones. Uh, the, the curb and sidewalk. This person is upset because they hear their taxes are going up, and, uh, they, they, the sidewalk program shouldn't be one where you reimburse, but where the taxpayers pay for their sidewalk. You know, I think it's more equitable that if your sidewalk needs to get repaired, that you pay for it and not the whole town. So, instead of putting that $500,000 debt burden on all the taxpayers, it's only on the folks that have to fix up their own sidewalk, which I think is kind of fair because what if someone just fixed up their sidewalk five years ago, it's fine? Why am I going to pay for you to fix up your sidewalk? So, so no. Uh, here's one. We're going to have audience participation. Will food trucks on Ocean Avenue be eventually eliminated? Who here likes food trucks on Ocean Avenue, raise your hand. Who here hates food trucks on Ocean Avenue? Who doesn't care? Uh, the food trucks are going away. Wait, I think the food trucks are staying.
Yay!
Now the food trucks are, the food trucks are going. Uh, you know, with the end of you being completed and the Taylor Pavilion, you know, we never had food trucks before Sandy. We put them up there for the benefit of the folks who had their businesses. We don't want to see anyone suffer, uh, because we lost those buildings to storm. Uh, but now that the buildings are rebuilt, uh, we're going to be going out to bid, um, next couple of weeks or so on both those spaces. Uh, you know, we've already had some interest in Taylor Pavilion, and the one on, on 10th Avenue is going to be, you know, it could be a dual use. If you remember, like, on 10th Avenue, that's where 10th Avenue, it frees up from, right? It was on 10th Avenue. So, hopefully, they go back and be nice and nice in place there. Uh, but there's enough space to have two things there, to be honest with you. And then also, Taylor Pavilion, uh, probably one, um, nice restaurant. Um, no alcohol, but, but a nice restaurant nonetheless. Uh, exit 98 is still under discussion. Will there be a pedestrian walk over Route 35 to the marina? That's a good question. Uh, if we could, that'd be fantastic. Um, you know, it's something we'd have to work with Department of Transportation on, and it just, as Colleen, so, so gestures, uh, it just comes down to money. So, uh, if we could afford it, if we could figure out a way to pay for it, I think that's a great idea. I will tell you though, remember, it's got to be ADA compliant. So, that means you can't just have steps up to something. So, if, 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 you know, and you got to get the ramp over tractor trailers. So, let's say you give me 20 feet in the air, right? 20 feet in the air means you got a ramp that's probably running 240 feet because you have to go up one inch per foot, right? You only go out one foot to run. So, you're talking like half a block, if not more, of, of a ramp to get up to go over, so... The other question?
Yeah, there's actually, uh, you can walk under 35 at 7th. Why, why would we need to build something if we already have something? 35 already is the bridge if you can already walk under.
Answering that? No, I didn't ask that question. Uh, how will parking be handled at the marina once the new restaurant opens? Um, you know, it's going to be the same as it was before. Uh, it's going to be crowded. I would encourage people to ride their bike or take Uber. We have an Uber driver here, take Uber. Uh, you know, or find a way to get there without driving the car, uh, just because, just like the beachfront, uh, it, it's going to be busy. Here's one, um, are we any closer to summon the pigeon problem at the train station? There is a pigeon problem at the train station. So, not only do we have the most aggressive squirrels in America, we also have some really aggressive pigeons that like dropping themselves all over the, uh, benches. And we have these nice black benches that are covered in stuff that you and I are not going to sit on. So, our Republican Public Works goes out there on occasion, and we power wash it, and the pigeons slam. All right, and then two days later, it looks the same. So, it's really, it's, it's, it's the property of New Jersey Trantin, uh, which doesn't seem to give us a lot of respect, by the way. Um, but it's something that we'll work with them on and try to figure out where we can put more bedding above the benches. Uh, or Drew Heisman will just take the pigs out and we'll just shoot all the pigeons. I'm going to sing with bikes, but I don't think you want to bite this. Uh, that's, what other question we got? Oh! It's 12:15. You want me to wrap up, or you want me to take some questions or keep going? Or what are you, what are you all on? Wrap it up? Our hour starts at 12:30, is that... All right, well, thank you all very much. One more time, if you want to leave, real fast, my email is simmymayor@belmar.com. My cell phone number is 722-681-1300. And thank you all very, very much.